Good evening and welcome to the Beverly School Committee's Curriculum and Instruction Student Life Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 9th, 2022, and we are meeting in a hybrid model today using a remote meeting application provided at no cost to our district with captioning, allowing for remote participation and for public access to the remote portions of the meeting. We are also recording tonight and being broadcast and streamed by BevCam. So, thank you BevCam. On June 16th, 2021, the governor signed the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Among other things, the bill allows public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely until April 1st, 2022. This specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present and asks our body to use technical methods to allow safe public to access. We would encourage viewers to utilize the BevCam streaming options this evening if possible. As a note, Beverly has prior approval for remote participation, although the chair and a quorum will be physically present when this act expires. Joining us today are members of the school committee and various members of district administration and leadership teams. We will conduct a full roll call for attendance in a moment for the record since a meeting application sometimes does not display all participants. Please remember that any audio/video you supply on this platform will become part of the meeting record. As such, please use your mute functionality to prevent background noises. I would like to ask President Abel to conduct a roll call vote to ensure you're able to both see, I'm sorry, to both hear me and hear that we can hear you this evening.
Okay. Again, let's see, we have Oliver Wagner. He's saying here. Okay, Mia?
Here.
Thank you. Charmaine?
Present.
I'm not familiar with Amber Malm. I don't know that you're on the committee. Are you just watch, watching or? Oh, pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Okay, let me see. I should have looked at the picture first. Let's see. And Jennifer Thomas, yes, and?
Here.
Great. We have Gregory Twombly.
Here.
And Julie Ferrara.
Here.
And our citizen reps, we have Karen Goodno-McGuire. I really need to use these.
Here.
And Lauren Sudak.
Here.
Okay. And then the others are myself, just running the meeting. We have Dr. Churocek so she can run the slides. And we have Dorothy Flaherty.
Here.
I think that's it. They keep jumping around, but I think I got them all. Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask Dr. Churocek to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. So, I would like to turn this meeting over to Dr. Flaherty. I know we have a pretty full agenda tonight, so.
We do have a full agenda, and I thank Dr. Churocek. She's my team partner today because I can't be there in person, so she's going to move the slides for us. And we saw that we started to have quite a lot of information about the high school, so we decided to have a whole high school night, so you can hear about all the wonderful things that are going on there and also meet our two new directors, Amber Malm and Jennifer Thomas. So, we're really excited to have them join us this evening to talk about some of the great curriculum work that they've already accomplished in a very short period of time. So, the things that we'll be going through tonight are approval of the minutes, we'll hear from our students, and then we will turn the rest of the meeting over to Principal Taylor and her team to talk about the high school. So, the first order on the agenda is approval of minutes from the January 12th, 2022 meeting, and we need a motion to approve those.
I will make a motion to approve our meeting records, the minutes of January 12th, 2022.
I second.
I didn't have any edits or corrections. I don't know if anyone else did.
I did not.
Okay. Do you want me to call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Abel, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Dr. Silva?
Here.
Approval, yea, nay, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Gregory Twombly?
Yes.
Lauren Sudak?
Yes.
And Karen Goodno-McGuire?
Yes.
Charmaine?
Yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Ms. Abel. Yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I believe that's nine, zero unanimous. I don't think I missed anyone. Okay.
Okay. So, we can turn it back to Dr. Flaherty. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, it's always an exciting time to be able to hear from our students and hear what's happening in their lives and in their schools. So, we'll start with BMS. And Charmaine, can you, do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. This week is Council Appreciation Week, so I just wanted to take the time to say thank you to all of the, our lovely councils of BMS for helping us, whether it be applying to high schools or just of mental health. Yeah, that's all.
That's a very important thing. We thank you for bringing that up and know that they're a critical part of the daily life for our students. So, thank you for honoring them. Oliver, did you have anything that you wanted to share this evening?
I don't have anything to add. Charmaine really covered what I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. And Mia from Beverly High School is with us this evening.
Yeah, so I think me and my fellow seniors are doing a lot with colleges right now and applying to scholarships and thinking about internships. And I think it's all really stressful, but I think we're handling ourselves well and the school is doing a really good job at providing us with all the resources we need. And if we need help, we know who to go to and what to do. So, I think they're doing a really good job with that, and I just wanted to let them know that we appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. Exciting times. And we are going to move right into Beverly High because they do have a lot of information to share with us this evening. And Ms. Principal Taylor will take it from here. We do have an action item, either when she's finished talking about the program of studies or at the end of the presentation, but we do need to approve the program of studies this evening. Mrs. Taylor, could you lead us in your presentation?
Thank you, Dr. Flaherty. Thank you, everybody, for inviting me to brag about the high school. And we do have, I do have three staff members with me, our three directors, the Director of College and Career Readiness, the Director of STEM, and the Director of Humanities. And we get to their portion, they'll, they'll take over and explain their slides. So, the first thing I had put up was the vision of the graduate. And I wanted to do that for a couple of reasons. One, it ties in with the presentation I'm going to give you about NIASC, but it's also, you know, what we're aiming to do as a staff in a school. And what I really want to emphasize is, I think the through line here is that the students have a series of competencies to make them be able to have, be good citizens and good neighbors, but also be able to be flexible and resilient in their own life, not only in personal life, but in career as well. And I wanted to say that a lot of the things that we are highlighting tonight are things that the staff has been working on, both what I like to call BC, before COVID, and DC during COVID. So, we had some of these plans and preparation happening before COVID hit, and we stuck with it during COVID as well. And we're starting to see, I think, some fruition of what we were trying to go to and how we're going to help this vision come true. So, I'm going to first speak to you about the NIASC report. First of all, what you need to know is NIASC is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And every 10 years, schools participate in a review where they do their own self-reflection and say, this is what we're doing and this is what we're trying to do. And then, a visiting team comes in and visits the school, interviews people, gives feedback on where they think the school could continue on their vision and their plans and goals and other, any other concerns or recommendations that they make. Then they return, we have a year to continue the work, and then they return one last time. So, this past October, we had our NIASC committee come. The two chairs came live in the building, and the rest of the committee came virtually, which means we had some students running around with laptops, sort of carrying them through classes and through different hallways of the building so they could get a sense of Beverly High School. So, the NIASC report is out, and for those of you that have a copy of this slide presentation, that, that heading, NIASC Report, is a live link to the full report if you want to review it. I'm just going to give you some highlights, and so we'll move to the next slide. So, here are the standards that were evaluated on. And if you take a look, they are very big umbrellas, learning culture, different kinds of elements about that. And we've met the standard. There's only one area where the NIASC committee determined that we have not met the standard, and that has to do with student learning. In particular, their recommendation is to continue our work on our curriculum maps. And as I go through this, we'll get to that piece in their recommendations. So, what I have here is the priority areas that they took a look at and are recommending for us. One priority area is to articulate career pathways with transition plans beyond high school. Again, this is something we've been planning on. They knew that, that this is their commentary on what they've seen so far. They suggest make sure that families and homes have a clear understanding of what the career pathways program is, continue to develop the existing pathway plans. I'm sorry, I lost my place a little bit here. Continue to, thank you, I'm blind as a bat. Where are we? Okay. Continue to develop the existing pathway programs, including ways for students to obtain attainable certifications in their fields, and develop a plan to recognize students who want to pursue, pursue a specific pathway of recognition at graduation. So, I think when Ms. Ferrara speaks in particular about the work that she's going to, she's doing with career and college planning, that she can address some of the recommendations there. Another priority area was to develop and share a set of research-based practices to address social-emotional learning in all classrooms in a consistent manner. And again, this was our priority area, BC. Certainly, COVID put an urgency to that. And so, some of the recommendations are develop protocols for students to self-evaluate their progress on the PRALE standards and track their own progress using the advisory program. PRALE is a, a social-emotional sort of checklist for students that we had a committee of teachers work on for the past two years, and now is being implemented through advisory program and in the classroom. Periodically, survey faculty on student progress on PRALE and report out school-wide proficiency on the five PRALE categories at faculty meetings. Disaggregating data by student grade, course level, and subject in order to provide a clear picture of areas where more support is needed. Another priority, a priority area is to leverage existing professional knowledge of project-based learning, universal design for learning, and collaborative practice in order to develop and then propagate authentic learner-centered experiences across the curriculum. Now, as you know, project-based learning and universal design for learning and collaborative practice have been a goal of the district for several years now. What, what the NIASC committee is recommending to, to create growth in that area, continue the, the current efforts to expand project-based learning across the curriculum, and take a look at the competencies of the faculty concerning tier-one behavioral, emotional, and academic supports with DCAP. In other words, how do we reach out to students and what are our tier-one efforts in that area? And the next, I'm sorry, is yours screen a little different from mine? Okay, thanks. This, this ties back into the, the standard about curriculum development. Departments will ensure that there is a written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses across all departments that includes units of study with guiding questions, concepts, content, and skills that integrate with the school's vision of the graduate. I should say that curriculum is always an ongoing process because you should be looking and renewing your curriculum. And we certainly have some curriculum maps for our courses, but we had gaps. And, and we're taking a look at where our gaps are and being consistent on our curriculum maps. So, their recommendations are highlight the ways that BHS' vision of the graduate is reflected in the curriculum, templates and the written curriculum recorded in them, clarify the erative relationship between the content of the curriculum guides and the Common Assessment Data Literacy Project being led by the Directors of STEM and Humanities, and they will speak to that tonight, using the understanding of the synergy between the Common Assessments and Curriculum Template Initiatives, provide time and support for teachers to complete and refine the concept of the shared curriculum template. Well, that's always an issue, more time to collaborate, more time to create our final product, and complete the written curriculum documents for every course in every department of the school. So, we will continue our work in that particular area. So, those are the, that's a nutshell of the, of NIASC. If you take a look at, when you get a chance to look at the link, they give a narrative of in each of our areas and what Beverly High School does. This will be a public document. I'll put it out on our school's website and let parents know it's available, too, so that they can look at it as well. So, why don't I pause there to see if there's any questions in regard to this particular item? Okay, you can always come up with some later.
Yes, Dr. Silva?
Can you talk about, in terms of metrics that even with the curriculum or the gaps in curriculum, what metrics are being put in that you're discussing and coming up with in order to monitor them?
They, meaning the staff?
Um.
Oh, you mean the committee?
Yes.
Well, what the committee, when they come to visit, they, we give them full access to our curriculum maps and also any of our common assessments, and they review those. Yeah, and yeah, they, they have a rubric. They apply for every area.
And Betty, they'll be back again, correct?
No, we're done. It's 10, they'll be back in 10 years. And we have received our accreditation. These are the recommendations that we should, what we should consider to work on, but we have received accreditation, and it's another 10 years before it'll happen again.
And along with the recommendations, as I read through the report, there's also quite a lengthy list of commendations as well, correct?
Yes, there are. The commendations were particularly highlighted in their first visit. This was more the, you know, the summary of where you should go from here. All right, I think we move to the, I think. Okay. Program of Studies. Now, this is what Dr. Flaherty referred to, as we may pause, I don't know if you, Ms. Robinson said, I don't know if you want to do this at the end or during this point, but these are what the new submissions in our program of studies. So, these are the changes in programs of study, so I think it needs your approval. So, let me go over these. They're very brief, actually. First of all, we've changed some courses and credits. We're going to take wellness courses. Right now, if they're worth, there's four years of wellness, that's 12.5 credits. We're going to go down to 10 credits. So, that's four years of 2.5 credits in wellness. Right now, the ninth grade has a full year of wellness. That's where the 12.5 comes from. And one of the reasons why we're making this recommendation is because of the second course that we have listed here. In order to begin our career pathways, we're recommending that freshmen should take this course called My Future in Career Success for 2.5 credits. It's a semester course. So, that, and as you may know, freshman year is probably the most packed schedule because we, they're on a team and they have all the major subjects. They, they have to, they, they take a computer science course, they take a Wellness 9, and we're recommending this as well as a start off for students to make some decisions about the, what courses and curriculum they'll take in the remaining three years of school. We'd all like, also like to introduce these new courses. Part of our initiative is to make sure that we are offering more opportunities for challenge for our students and to recruit more students across the board to take on that challenge. So, we would like to offer an Advanced Placement Human Geography course, and we'd like it to be open to grades nine through 12. We'd like to offer an Advanced Placement Psychology course, and again, make it available to grades nine through 12, and an Advanced Placement Environmental Science, and we're recommending that for grades 10 to 12. And last, we'd like to offer a new elective journalism. Again, it's open to all grades. We think that'll be a nice complement to some of the career pathway choices. So, yeah, thanks. Actually, the, what's coming up this week, it is this week, we're calling it Course Excitement Week. And what we'd want to do is really get students and families to be much more reflective, especially our students.
Let me know from the board.
Sure. Sure. So, what we have here, and I have to give Ms. Ferrara a lot of credit for getting this together. We also have content facilitators in every department, so they did a lot of this work. I was shocked to discover that people don't read our program of studies from cover to cover. So, instead, we, we are sharing with the students and we're sharing out with the parents, this Course Exploration Board, and we're asking teachers in each department to take some time out of their, the, the class one day this week and to go over their department's options and the different courses that are required and also all the electives. So, they've done a wonderful job on it, and, and you know, I'd love to, to play with you because I think you'll like the look of them and everything else. Let me point out the career education one because that's sort of a new area, and again, it'll echo what's going on with career pathways. Yeah. And there's click on that, yeah. So, what we're recommending for career education courses is, of course, this course, My Future in Career Success. We have piloted it this year, and Ms. Megan Sudak has run the course, and the students that finished it first semester have their OSHA certification. That's one of the goals in the course is to have that certification when you're done. We also have the Essex Tech After-Doc Program that we see, put under career education courses. We have the different pods, or excuse me, vocational programs that Essex Tech offers. That's this path, this is this upcoming year, what they're offering. And we have, I believe, about 40 students participating right now in these programs, some, both seniors who are finishing up the program and juniors as well. And what the pathways that we're going to be introducing and encouraging people to participate in this year are allied health, business and marketing, hospitality, education and training, and environmental science. So, our goal is for the incoming freshman class, they take that My Future in Career Success course, and then if they choose these pathways, we have recommendations, of course, they should take. And our ultimate goal is by junior into senior year, they have a plan for beyond high school. We're going to be encouraging advanced placement, and we're going to be encouraging dual enrollment. And we're, we are working to build these certification programs with the colleges so that a student does graduate with certifications in certain areas. So, our OSHA certification was the first, but we'll, we'll move on from there. So, I think we can go back.
Can we go back to the board or just?
I think that that's fine. Feel free to explore the board. It'll give you an idea. We do have, I think, one of the things that students and parents like about Beverly High School is we do have a lot of electives that we can offer. And I think, I know that the teachers have shown this. Some students are saying, oh, I didn't know you had that course. Again, because they're not reading the program of study. So, anyways, if they explore here, you get a really good idea of what your options are. Yes?
I just wanted to say that I've been having a lot of wonderful conversations about course selection. So, whatever you're doing during this week is really working because the conversation, every single day, I'm, I'm having a conversation about the difference between courses. So, I think it's great.
I'm glad to hear that. That's great.
And all these things that are available. It's very refreshing.
Yeah, the staff work really hard on, you know, of course, if, if you're teaching a certain elective and you love it, you, you really are trying to sell that. And then we want to make sure that people are clear on what they have to do, you know, as far as requirement work is done. We're also asking our teachers to have conversations with students and recommend students to take higher-level courses, to consider taking an honors course. So, maybe you should take the AP course. And we're, we've always encouraged that, but we're trying to be much more structured about it. And each teacher has a goal of speaking personally to five students this year so that we can encourage students to take more challenging courses. We're going to be using the advisory program. It, we started today. Every student will have gotten their course selection sheets, which lists, lists what their requirements are and what their options are. We're hoping they'll bring them home, and we're going to continue to talk to them about their options. We've also asked students who are currently in AP courses to be our AP ambassadors. They'll be in the cafeteria this week in bright yellow t-shirts saying, "Ask me about my Advanced Placement course." We're asking kids to talk about what they like about the courses and, and answer questions about how hard it is or what do you need to do to be successful. We really are aiming to increase our AP enrollment. Course selection at BHS begins on March 2nd and ends on March 18th. Course selection for Beverly Middle School, grade eight, takes place on April 7th and 8th and 11th. So, we're really doing a real strong push that people know what their options are and that people consider trying something different, trying something new for Course Excitement Week. The other thing, of course, and I think we spoke to this committee before about this, but these are the career pathways we're launching. Now, remember, people, students don't have to choose to do this. This is just that we're saying, here's some particular, if you're interested in these careers in these fields, here are the courses Beverly High School offers. And here are the, the dual enrollment links that we have. In other words, if you really want to be prepared for the next phase beyond high school, whether it's four-year college or a two-year college or into the workforce, here's some recommendations that we particularly have at the school that can support that. And you know, down the line, we, we've hoped to slowly expand this, but we have a, we always had a very strong business and marketing program, so we definitely felt confident there. We have a culinary arts program, so we'll expand it into looking into hospitality. Environmental science is something the students care passionately about. And again, we've got some science courses that build that way. And of course, allied health is another area we want to go. Education and training, well, I have to say that's a pet of mine because we need more teachers. So, let's, and we know that in our internship, so many of our students are interested in doing, being in the classroom, so we want to sort of build their capacity there. Now, what the guidance department is doing is making sure that parents have this information as well. So, actually, tomorrow night, they're going to be presenting four different workshops on information, one of which is parent information session for the class of 2025. Ms. Megan Sudak, who's a business teacher, and Ms. DeCarlo, who's a guidance counselor, will be doing that, and they'll be talking about the career pathways and what they look like. Also, the guidance, other guidance councils will be meeting with the class, other classes, I'm sorry, guidance will be in small groups with the class of 2025 during March 7th, again, to answer questions about career pathways. But there's a parent informational night about that tomorrow night. It's a live link, and that information has gone out, and I hope a lot of people can join us and we can answer questions for them. And then, I'm going to switch. I'd like to introduce my Director of College and Career Readiness, Ms. Ferrara, who was my assistant principal, but she's now on the first floor instead of the fourth floor. And I, she can speak to you about the after-doc program, our programs in general, and the good work that our guidance department has been doing. So, Ms. Ferrara, take it away.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. So, the first thing I'm going to review with everybody is the partnership program we have with the Essex Tech. It's called Essex Tech After Dark. And it's not quite after dark. It's more like afternoon hours, but it's kind of like a catchy little name for the program. And it's in its second full year of, since its inception. So, as Mrs. Taylor said, it's been a wonderful experience for our students. We have about 42 attending right now, juniors and seniors. And at this point in the school year, we are helping the 10th graders who have an interest in applying to this after-dark program and actually getting their applications completed. And it's an online process that, you know, takes a little time because it's an online application process, and then the next step is actually an interview, much like Essex Tech handles eighth-grade applicants going into high school. So, for that reason... going into high school. So for that reason, I'm just going to speak to what you see at the bottom of that slide. We have a Parent Information Session posted by the Guidance Department, but facilitated by Mary Ann Garren of Essex Tech. She is the coordinator of the After Dark program. So she and Melinda Lucian, Guidance Counselor at the high school, will be hosting this session to answer any questions for parents, and even students, if they want to hop on this session about the application process. Mary Ann Garren and a few of the other staff members from Essex Tech came over to the high school to have a student information session about a month ago. And we had about 40 students, 40 10th graders, who were very interested. And what they're promoting are their six career and technical education programs that they offer through the After Dark program. And it's really amazing to see these six programs. If you, you know, ever have a chance to drive by Essex Tech, you can just see how impressive the facility is. But when you see our students actually in these specific shops, dressed in their uniforms, and learning all about the industry in that field, it's really amazing. So we're excited about the next steps of helping some of our 10th graders apply for this, for their junior and senior year. I believe you can go to the next slide. Great, thank you so much. So one of the topics for me tonight was to explain kind of our college readiness and career readiness programs, and what has been happening here this year at the high school. I've been working with the Guidance Staff very closely, and also with Maggie Lilly, who is the middle school Guidance Counselor for the 7th and 8th grade. And we're really trying to put a lot in place for students to have access to thinking about and visioning themselves beyond high school. So of course, that's always been a goal, but we're trying to look at a huge vision of that, but then also increase the opportunities students have to interface with and engage with colleges, and also people in the career fields of interest that students may have at this time. So I'm just going to review a few things that we have going on currently. We have been strengthening our dual enrollment partnerships with North Shore Community College. They have a whole program titled Early College with a large staff. They're amazing staff. I've met with them quite a few times this winter, and we've been able to put together some opportunities for students here at Beverly High. The great thing right now about the Early College program at North Shore is their courses are free, that they offer to our Beverly High students. So that has been an amazing thing. So currently, we have a course called Understanding Higher Education and Career Pathways. We have about 15 of our EL students participating in this course, so it's increasing access for that particular population, and awareness of the opportunities they have entering college, or beyond college, or going right into a career after high school. So that started last week, and that's every Monday and Wednesday night. We also have an EMT Training and Certification Preparation course that just started this week. It's actually a trial for two weeks leading up to February vacation, for students to see if they can commit to this, because it's quite a few hours. It's three hours every Panther Day, which equates to nine college credits. So this course is free. It covers the cost of the course, and the materials, and also the certification exam at the end of the course. So currently, we have 12 students who were interested. That might lessen a little bit, because we're in the trial phase, and of course, like I said, they have to commit. And these are seniors that have a lot going on right now, but we're hopeful that we will have a nice-sized class. And this is for students that are interested in possibly becoming an EMT, but it could be students interested in becoming a police officer, or a firefighter, or even nursing, or medical school down the road. So it really encompasses a wide range of careers. And then also, North Shore offers a variety of semester courses for students. These are all virtual, so currently, we have five to 10 of our high school students who've enrolled in these different opportunities, and I listed a few of them there. Tonight, we started a dual enrollment Endocot College course. It's actually going on right down the hall for me, here at the high school. It's called Intro to Human Services, and we have 15 students taking that course. So the district is paying for that course, the fee, or the cost of the tuition for the students taking that course currently, which is an amazing thing. And the Human Services course is wonderful, because it relates back to many of our pathways, education, allied health, or even business. So that's a nice, broad introductory course for students. So those are some of our opportunities with dual enrollment, which is amazing. And then a few other things we've done as far as college exploration. These are enhancements. These are new events, or enhanced events for this school year. So we typically have a mini-college fair, that's inviting two- and four-year colleges in a fair style in the early fall for juniors and seniors. So we did have that, but we did create a brand-new type of fair for students, the Career Education and Discovery Fair. This was on November 4th for juniors and seniors. So this was more of like the two-year schools, and the trade schools, and the employment opportunities that come right out of, first, come right out of, right after high school, I'm sorry. So students have a different path. They may not be thinking about a four-year college path, but these are opportunities that they can take part in. So that was very successful, very well-attended. We also had mini-college field trips for seniors. We went to Salem State, we went to North Shore, we went to Merrimack. So we had about 15 to 20 students taking those trips, and we hope to do that in the spring for juniors as well. We had a lot of virtual and in-person college rep visits, so different schools coming in, that students could sign up to hear from. We also had two on-the-spot admissions events, so North Shore came in, and Salem State as well, to accept students on the spot and answer their questions. So we had about 50 or more students take part in those two events. We're planning a college panel for juniors and their families in the evening on April 5th. And this will probably be a virtual event, but what we have done in the past is, we invite different representatives from admissions offices from a variety of colleges. So a two-year school, a four-year school, an Ivy League school, and then, you know, a few in between. And we ask them all the same questions, and students and families can hear, from their perspective, what they're looking for in their applicants. You can go to the next slide. And I think I have to go through this next stuff pretty quick, so I'm going to try to do that. So some career readiness events that we have coming up, I think I already said, the Career and Education Discovery Fair. But this next one, the BHS Career Day, this is kind of very near and dear to my heart, because when I first started at Beverly High, I was a Guidance Counselor, and this is something that we created a grassroots effort to start a Career Day 12 years ago. So we will be hosting this day again. It'll be on April 1st. And the whole day, kind of, it's not a whole day, it's an hour and a half, but it revolves around presentations by community members, parents, business owners who come in and speak to our junior class. So it's really centered around the junior class. And then, for the other students, we also have events for them. So for the sophomores, they're going to be working on a career map, so that they can present what they're thinking about doing, how to get there, what education is required, daily tasks, and salary. So they're going to be working on designing their own career map. For freshmen, we're hoping to utilize our Brilliant Pathways program. It's a partnership we have, college for every student. And they provide curriculum, and they also provide support for mentoring. So that's a piece that we would like to enhance, is having community members or local college students come in and mentor students on career pathways, and the opportunities for attending college and beyond. And then for our seniors, what's career-focused for us is, seniors will be wrapping up their reach proposals. You heard Mia earlier talking about, you know, everything that they're doing right now, and it seems like a lot for seniors, but one of the wonderful things is the Reach Internship Program, which is an opportunity for them to go out and have some experience in a career field. And they will have time on this day to write their proposals. And we're also planning an employment fair for, so for students who want to go right directly into the workforce after high school, and not particularly looking for an education piece, we'll have some opportunities here, so they can come around and talk to different people who are looking to employ students right out of high school. So the other two parent events that Mrs. Taylor was explaining that Guidance will be hosting are also tomorrow night. So we have four events tomorrow night, which is fantastic. But these two are focused on more the college readiness piece. So for the Class of 2023, that's juniors, there will be a post-secondary planning session hosted by Michelle Burke and Jessica Bushy, BHS Guidance Counselors. And that's all about the whole process, the calendar, and the details that parents are looking for regarding planning for post-secondary. And then I will be hosting a Parent Information Session for senior parents and families, and is understanding financial aid and local scholarships. So those are the other two sessions. So we already went over the other ones, that Megan Sudak and Danielle DeCarlo will be doing freshman parents' information on pathways, and then the Essex Tech Information Session for any students applying for that. Okay, so just a little bit about our Guidance Department. These, I am very lucky, these are people that I've worked with for a while, some for almost 20 years, some new. Maggie Lilly, for example, that's a new position that she has at the middle school. She is the 7th and 8th grade Guidance Counselor. And then up here at the high school, we do have five Guidance Counselors, Michelle Burke, Jessica Bushy, Danielle DeCarlo, Tina Grasso, and Melinda Lucian. So everyone on this list is very focused, and very passionate about what we do. They want to be part of the movement of increasing college and career awareness and exploration for students. So it's really a joy and a pleasure to work with them. And I just want to give them a shout-out, because up here at the high school, the Guidance Staff has managed to get in to see all of their students in small groups at least once at the halfway point in the year. So our goal this year was to see freshmen twice in small groups, with their own Guidance Counselor, sophomores twice, juniors twice, and seniors twice. So this week, they had their second session with seniors to do the local scholarship process and understanding financial aid. And I know Mia mentioned that earlier as well. So we're very pleased, we're trying to increase access to students. It's difficult, because our students at the high school are in classes, you know, every minute of the day. So it's like, where can we fit in guidance activities and career awareness activities? But we've been creative, and we're really working towards that. Another thing that we're working on is scope and sequence for grades 7 through 12. So this entire team, including Maggie at the middle school, we have been meeting, and we will continue to meet, to develop a scope and sequence that encompasses the college and career readiness for every grade 7 through 12. That is our goal. We're chipping away at it, and it's taking a little time, but we already do so much, we just haven't been able to really identify it and put it in one place together. So it's been a lot of fun, and we're excited.
Thank you, Julie. I'm going to move on to our curriculum work, assessments and data analysis, and that will be our two directors. Dr. Jennifer Thomas is our STEM Director, and Ms. Amber Mom is our Humanities. So I think they're going to share screens, and I hate to say this, but if you can be quick, that'd be great, though they have really So Jen, or Amber, I don't know who's starting. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jennifer Thomas. We're just going to try to go quickly through this. One of the areas we're working on this year is to build data literacy among us, our staff. So highlight three of the things that we've been working on in developing this data literacy. We're having teachers implement standard-aligned benchmarks in their courses. They have been working very hard on collaboratively creating standards-aligned common assessments for both the midterms and finals. So, and then, the midterms just happened recently, so we're working right now and digging into the data. So we're engaging in ongoing analysis of the results, and then how we can apply this to teaching and learning.
Hi, I'm Amber, and I'm the Director of Humanities. And we've been also engaging continuously in professional development with the staff. A few things that we've been touching on is developing and calibrating on what a shared vision of rigor is. What does rigorous instruction really look like, sound like, and feel like in our classrooms? We've also had department-wide meetings, where we talk about strategies. We've looked at data, and we've analyzed student work, and discussed instructional strategies that would support rigorous instruction with equitable outcomes. And we also have our 9th and 10th grade teams participating in small professional learning communities, where we look at grade-level instruction and expectations.
And the final area of our work has been curriculum initiatives. So supporting teachers in developing and implementing the new resources that we have available to us. So the math teachers this year have adopted and implemented the use of Reveal, which is a new mathematical math curriculum resource. It's a digital platform, and this supports teachers in creating standard-aligned units. And then there's also a portion of this math curriculum, which is called Alex, which is a personalized learning system that can target specific skills and compete, and constantly adapts to students' own learning. So they're constantly assessing what skills they've mastered, and what standards, and then giving them what they're ready to learn.
And one thing that we're really excited about with the English Department is, we're about to embark in a text adoption process, where we'll be looking at either whole texts or supplemental texts, meaning, you know, poetry and short stories that we can supplement to the novels we already do, that will not only offer complex and rigorous learning experiences, but will also offer sliding glass doors and windows in, into our students' lives and the lives of others. So we want to make sure that we're, making sure that every student sees themselves in our, in our literature, and, and that they're constantly challenged by it. So we're excited to start that. And then the next thing that we've, we're going to continue working on, and Mrs. Taylor kind of spoke about that with, when she was talking about Mia's, is we're continuing to revise the written curriculum, meaning our curriculum maps, so that we can include units of studies with guiding questions, concepts, and skills that integrate with our own vision of the graduate. So that work has been ongoing, and it will continue to evolve as we work through all of these curriculum initiatives.
I want to say thank you to Jen and Amber. And I think what they've done for us... I want to say thank you to Jen and Amber. And I think what they've done for us is, we've always been talking about these things and doing them in pieces, but now, with their, with their leadership, we can be consistent, we can be comprehensive. I'm going to pause for a moment, because, yes, go ahead, Dr. Flaherty.
I was just going to say, in light of the time, and really wanting to leave any room for questions around the curriculum changes, or the Program of Studies, I think we should, we'll move the mental health resources and support in our after-school activities to the March meeting, and finish up with that information there. And I just wanted to underscore what Mrs. Taylor was saying about what an amazing addition Amber and Jennifer have been to our team, and to my team, as far as curriculum leaders, and what they've been able to accomplish in a very short period of time. We've moved years forward as far as getting people to look at data, making common assessments, and really starting to look at how we achieve our goal of creating a rigorous curriculum. And so I just want to brag a little bit about them, and say that they've been a fantastic addition to the team, and would open it to see if anybody has any questions. And then just finally, at the end, we will need a vote on the Program of Studies.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion, if I might, that we approve the additions to the Course of Studies. And then I have one question before.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Taylor, you outlined some of the additions. Were there anything, any changes to our offering that are taken away? I know that we have some classes that are flip-flopped every other year, but other than that, were there any, any areas that we?
Yeah, no, no course is taken away, but you're right, some of them rotate. So what, an elective that may have been offered this year won't be offered next year. And that's indicated in the Program of Studies and the course sheets.
Okay. I just have a question about the After Dark program. The areas that are offered, you went over, you know, the advanced manufacturing, down to sustainable horticulture. So just a couple of questions. If these courses are offered this year... a couple of questions. If these courses are offered this year, is it guaranteed that, like, students will be able to do that next year as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
In fact, one of the programs, they've removed graphic and visual design, but we have currently seniors that started that program and they're completing it. We just don't offer it to the next class. Essex Tech's made a commitment to make sure the students get their full vocational certification.
Okay, and that's great. And then just something I'd just like to, if anybody could ever look into this, I'm just curious, the kids who end up in the After Dark program, I would just like to know if they had initially applied to Essex Tech. I think that'd be an interesting thing.
I don't know, Julie. I think we may have looked into that a little. We might have some information about that. I mean, I know some have. And I know some kids spoke personally about having been on waiting lists for Essex Tech, but we might have more accurate data.
Okay.
I just have a quick question about the dual enrollment. Is there an opportunity, perhaps maybe not immediately, but in the future, where some of the coursework could be accepted as college credit that could be applied to electives when students enroll in full-time college?
Julie, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, actually, that's a good question. And all of those credits at Endicott and North Shore are applicable to any college. However, sometimes they're counted as an elective, like your question. Sometimes they don't satisfy exactly what they would at those at North Shore and Endicott, but if, let's say, they want to go to the UMass Lowell, maybe that Endicott course could count towards, you know, a different elective credit. So, it's not credits lost.
Yeah, that's great.
Ms. Robinson, I think I'm ready to vote. The motion I made was to accept the additions to the curriculum, sorry, to the Program of Studies.
Okay, so all those, should we do a roll call?
Right, we need to do a roll call. So, that's why you're looking at us.
New at this.
We're going to go in the same order that I wrote it down, although I think we lost a couple of our students to their homework, I'm sure. Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Twombly?
Yes.
Lauren and Sudak?
Yes.
Karen Gooden McGuire? We might have lost her as well. Okay. Mia, you're still with us?
Yes.
And it looks like Shermine Oliver are gone. Karen Robinson?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six to zero.
Thank you very much. And we will do Part B of the presentation, which looks at the remaining items, mental health, resources, and support in our after-school activities at our March meeting. And that, I think, is our agenda so that we can get to our School Committee on time.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Twombly?
Yes.
Lauren and Sudak?
Yes.
Yes.
Karen and Rachel, yes. Okay, six to zero again. Thank you, everyone. We're going to roll right into the next meeting in just a moment. Thank you, everyone. Today is February 9th, Wednesday, February 9th. We are in the Beverly Middle School library at this time. We are also online in a remote meeting platform. And our friends from BevCam are both streaming and broadcasting our meeting this evening. This is a regular school committee meeting. It is in a hybrid model using the remote meeting application that I mentioned that is provided at no cost to our district with captioning, allowing for the remote participation and for public access to the open portions of this meeting. We're also making a recording of this meeting tonight and the broadcast, as I mentioned. So, thank you, BevCam. On June 16th, 2021, the Governor signed Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, which, among other things, allows public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely until April 1st, 2022. This specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to physically be present and asks our body to use technical methods to allow for safe public access. We would encourage viewers to utilize the BevCam streaming option this evening, if possible. As noted, Beverly has prior approval for remote meeting participation, although the chair and a quorum must be physically present when the act expires. Tonight is a regular school committee meeting. This means we do have an agenda item for addressing the body. The Chair would like to modify our agenda. We will cover Items 1, 2, and 3. Then, we will skip to 8A, which is a report from our Superintendent, before continuing the agenda as posted. Joining us tonight are members of the School Committee and various members of the District Administration and Leadership Teams. I will conduct a roll call in just a moment. I want to let you know that any of the video or audio that you supply on this platform will become part of a public record. Therefore, if you're joining us remotely, please use the mute functionality to prevent background noises. For those of us here, we do have microphones. This is for BevCam to be able to hear us. The rest of us, we just need to project within the room. And let me now do the roll call. I'm going to start with the online participants. We have Dr. Kenan McKenzie, our Ward 2 Representative, joining us remotely this evening. We also have Bethany Splansky and Dana Krujshank joining us remotely.
Here.
Thank you. And our Assistant Superintendent, Dorothy Flaherty. Dr. Dorothy Flaherty is also joining us remotely.
Here.
Okay. And then Dr. Trocheck and I are in the meeting, as well as BevCam, just to facilitate the way we're all connected in the hybrid fashion. Joining us in the library, we have Dr. Jeffrey Silva.
Here.
Mayor Michael Cahill.
Here.
Student Representative Hollis Colby.
Here.
Our Executive Secretary Donna Bergeron.
Here.
Our Superintendent, Dr. Sue Turekchak.
Here.
We have Dr. Andre Morgan.
Here.
Ms. Erin Brown.
Here.
Ms. Jean Sherburne.
Here.
And Principal Betty Taylor.
Here.
We have School Committee Person, Lord Visnick.
Here.
Ward 6. Ward 5, Ms. Karen Robinson.
Here.
And I am Rachel Abel, Ward 1, and this term's President. Okay, that's our roll call. We do have one remote participant, so we will take our votes by roll call this evening, and I will call the roll. And with that, for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Robinson, may I ask you to lead us in the pledge? There is a flag right over on this side of the column.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. With that, it is always a pleasure to be able to recognize our students. And Dr. Turekchak will help me this evening as we recognize our Beverly Ambassador to the Governor's Project 351.
Thank you. So, it is always a pleasure to be able to do this. First of all, I thought I'd tell you a little bit about what a Project 351 Ambassador is. An Ambassador is an eighth-grade student selected by educators based on exemplary ethic of service and the values of kindness, compassion, humility, and grace. A special emphasis is placed on the recognition of unsung heroes and quiet leaders and the rich diversity of our Commonwealth. There is no application process. The educators in the building nominate a student and select the Ambassador. The Ambassador is invited to participate in 12 months of unique service. They share a passion for making a positive difference in our community and in our world. And so, I'd love to present to you the Ambassador for our Beverly Middle School, Sadie Brennan. So, could you come on up, please? Congratulations, Sadie. You did a great job, Miss Brennan.
Did you do the elbow bumps?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you.
Good for you as well. Oh, thank you so much.
We wish you the best in your service. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do report back what you choose to do for your project. We'd love to hear from you.
Of course. Okay. Next on our agenda, we'll have a report from our Student Representative, Hollis Colby. Thank you so much for sticking with us this evening on the double meeting.
Of course, thank you. So, I have a few things from a little bit of last month towards the end of the month. I also have some, like, repeating items that you heard in the SISL meeting before this, and I also have some new items. So, first semester grades were closed January 28th, and the new semester started January 31st. And students are continuing in year-long courses and have started new half-year courses. Report cards were also posted on Friday, February 4th on Aspen, and that can be accessed with the student or by a parent. And BHS is offering a dual enrollment course with North Shore Community College for English language learners entitled Understanding Higher Education and Career Pathways. The course will begin on Monday 31st, or rather, began on January 31st. It is being taught by North Shore Community College professors at Beverly High School on Monday and Wednesday, Wednesday afternoons. BHS staff are offering virtual parent-teacher conferences for report cards this week from February 4th to February 11th. Teachers reach out via email to parents by making appointments no later than February 1st. BHS teachers will be offering six minutes appointment slots, sorry, appointment slots sometime this week. This is excluding vacations and weekdays, weekend days, and to create an opportunity for parents to confer with their students' teachers. Beverly High School and Endicott College are offering a dual enrollment course entitled HMS 100 Introduction to Human Services. The course provides an introduction to the various aspects of the human services field. Particular attention is given to the professional roles, issues, and strategies that are found in helping professions. This course is open to 10th through 12th grade students, and we will be held in person at BHS on Wednesday evenings from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., starting on February 9th, 2022, and it ends on April 27th, 2022. This course will account for both college and high school credits, and the course is free. However, Endicott charges a $25 enrollment fee, and students are responsible for the cost of the required book for the course. Scholarships are available for both registration fee and book, if needed. And finally, February 4th, Beverly High School is closed due to weather conditions, and February vacation will start on the February 21st, and students will return back to school on Monday, the 28th. And that is all I have for this month.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. We appreciate it. And as always, if you have homework, feel free to leave the table. Thank you for joining us. And if you have homework, feel free to leave. The committee will now move to Agenda Item 8A briefly, and then we'll resume our agenda. Since Dr. McKenzie is at home, the cameras aren't always picking up the person speaking, so I'm going to try to make her part of the meeting as well here.
So, that would be 8A would be me?
8A, Dr. Turekchak, please.
All right. And thank you. I think a little explanation as to why we're kind of going out of agenda order. I know that some of you are aware, the Governor, I mean, the Commissioner and the Governor had a press conference today, and it's a topic that has been on everyone's mind, and we've had a lot of conversations about it. So, we thought we would bring it out early so that we could have the chance to talk about it. I have, I'll start quickly just briefly with the COVID updates as to where we are in Beverly and what the situation looks like. As of February 3rd, these are the mass.gov vaccination rates for the city of Beverly. Typically, you know, I share these with you each week. This is not school data. This is the city data for across the whole community. I added the Beverly community total because I do think it's important to take a look for us as a community, where are we as well. So, those are the rates by age range as well as for the community in total. So, fully vaccinated, it's 61% of 5- to 11-year-olds, 82% of 12- to 15-year-olds, 55% of 16- to 19-year-olds, 76% of the Beverly community. And again, as we know, as we go through these, sometimes these don't match exactly with the rates that we have in our own school. Our district dashboard is updated. As you can see, there's been a big shift in what we're seeing reported. This dashboard actually was only updated weekly this time because we had the ice storm, and we also made a shift last meeting. So, I apologize, it says twice weekly, but this is for a full week of information for where we are in terms of active cases. This is available to anyone that wants to look at it on our beverlyschools.org website on our COVID page. This is the update for the seven-day data for Beverly in terms of incident rates. As you can see, we had begun the month of January up around 144 average daily incidence rate per 100. We have dipped down now for the last week before this meeting to 28.5 daily incidence rates. It is, as we are seeing across the Commonwealth, as we're hearing about a huge dip in the rates, and we're seeing it's been very positive information that we've gotten. These are our vaccination rates as of Monday for our grade levels, broken down by grade level. So, we have, in terms of our vaccination rates, we're running in the elementary schools somewhere in the mid-50%. Again, remember, that age group was just most recently approved for vaccinations. Fully vaccinated at the middle school were in the low 60s in general for the grade level, and at our high school, we're running somewhere in the low 70s for fully vaccinated students. This is just a reminder, we're doing our symptomatic testing that we're continuing, and our at-home antigen program began this week. We distributed kits to families on Tuesday for testing today, and families took the kits home, were able to self-administer to their students. We only report positive results, and those results are still coming in, but we have a very, very, very low incidence of reports to date right now for that. But it's ongoing, and it will go on through April 22nd.
Question?
Sure, Ms. Visnick?
Dr. Turekchak?
Dr. Trocheck, can, do you have any, do you have a summary number of how many families chose to jump in that program?
Sorry, yes. It's 13, about 1,350 families are participating. We have 4,700 students. We distributed 1,300 tests. Remember, some families might have multiple students, but we sent home 1,300 boxes Tuesday to students.
Mayor Cahill.
Yeah, so just for clarity, it's 1,300 students who are participating.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
We had, in addition to the 1,300 students, we have about 480 staff members that are participating as well. Again, our dashboard will be continued to be updated on a weekly basis. Because we're doing the at-home testing program, we have discontinued contact tracing when to exposures within the building. We held vaccination clinics in the past, since our last meeting, we held two. One of the vaccinate, both of these clinics were held in school during the school day to help support families that might have had difficulty getting to the outside-of-school clinics. They weren't widely attended, but we were able to provide the opportunity to students, and some families were pretty grateful for that opportunity. So we held those clinics on the 3rd and on the 7th. And then finally, I think what everyone's kind of waiting to talk about tonight. So the Commissioner announced today that he will not renew the mask mandate that expires on February 28th, 2022. As of Monday, February 28th, the DESI guidelines recommend that schools operate as mask optional. That would mean that staff and students would not be required to wear masks in public school buildings. Please note, however, and this is important to remember, the mask requirement for public transportation, which includes our school buses, is a federal order. So until such time as this is changed at the federal level, even if we are to follow the DESI guidelines of mask optional, there is a mask requirement while riding on buses and vans. So I bring this forward to you tonight. I think it's important for me to state to you, I think throughout this pandemic, we have had the opportunity as a district. We've worked very hard to follow the guidelines that were issued by DESI. We've done a good job of implementing and utilizing those mitigation strategies. I think they've served us very well. I think I would like to, at this point in time, recommend that as a district, we would follow the change in guidelines. And when the mask mandate is lifted on the 28th, it would be my recommendation that we would go to a mask optional opportunity for our students in our schools. So I bring that forward. I'm not really sure it requires a vote because it wasn't necessarily a vote coming in since we've been following the guidelines. But I certainly want to offer it out for discussion, conversation to the committee.
Mayor Cahill.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Dr. Trocheck. I mean, my take and understanding is that there's no vote necessary, or certainly no vote necessary. The mask order is a state order. Since the state's letting it expire, it just goes back to no masks required come the 28th. That's my understanding at least.
I think in keeping with the way that we have followed the guidelines throughout the pandemic, that would be my understanding as well.
Ms. Visnick.
I guess I want to mention that I think in general, we have talked about mental health of both our students and our staff. And we've talked about some behavior issues that are ongoing. We've talked about the division in our community. And so I think that there will be a number of children who, because of their own health, will need to continue to mask. And they'll need to mask with, you know, an N95 or a KN95. And so I have a concern that, you know, unfortunately, unlike the woman, the young lady we just honored as the Project 351 ambassador, sometimes children can be mean. And just as we talked about not saying, oh, if you're unvaccinated, you have to mask, but if you're vaccinated, you don't have to mask, like that would, you know, that's like the Scarlet Letter, right? And so I think we need to really talk about what will we do in our schools to try to raise up the empathy level and not let children be shaming other children if they choose to continue to mask? Or the same thing for a staff member, right? I just, I am dismayed at the number of reports that I'm hearing about poor behavior in our schools and about, you know, the divisions within our community specifically around either masks or vaccinations. Everybody thinks they're right, and nobody's willing to offer the other side any grace. And so that really concerns me for the mental health of those children who, because of their physical health, will have to continue to mask. That's all, it's just a statement. Like, we can put it on the next meeting agenda, we can, it's nothing we're going to vote on, right? It's something that I just, I think our school administrators need to talk about and need to try to have a plan in place.
So I, I mean, I will say, our school administrators dedicate a tremendous amount of their time to mitigating and looking at social, emotional, and mental health issues within our schools and supporting a strong, positive culture among our students, and they would continue to do that whether it's around masking or whether it's around any other issue that we think about. So again, yes, I agree, it's something that we need to have on our radar, something that we need to keep in mind. I'm confident that the, I actually am confident that the students in Beverly will rise to the occasion. I think that, you know, we've all been working together throughout this pandemic on a lot of things. And yes, the message needs to be that this is a mask optional, not a mask elimination. It's certainly optional for anyone that chooses to or for health reasons needs to continue to wear a mask. I believe you'll see people continuing to wear masks of their own choice. I think the difference is that it's not a mandate and it won't be a requirement, and so it will be a choice whether or not someone does that. And we would absolutely be working to protect and make sure that no one is ostracized or maligned because of a choice that they make, as we would with any choice that anyone would make, so. But it's something that we definitely want to keep on the radar, so thanks for bringing that forward.
And I apologize if I implied that that hadn't been happening yet. I'm simply saying this is yet another wrinkle that we need to, you know, attack with intent.
Yes, I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Call Missa.
So that's what I have for 8A, I think, you know. So, you know, I guess, just so for informational reasons, for all of you to know, the mask mandate will end on February 28th when we are returning from vacation. It will be mask optional. I would please want anyone that's watching and listening to understand two things. It is in place until February 28th. That means throughout the next couple of weeks of school, masks are still required in our schools. They can't, students can't come to school tomorrow not wearing masks. I'm hoping that everyone understands that and that we, you know, that we can manage through the next couple. We do still have two weeks of school before we, or a week and a half before we go home. And then finally, they will still be, unless something happens at the federal level, they will still be required on our buses. They will have to wear buses to ride our, the staff, the bus drivers, the monitors, and students riding the bus will be required to wear those masks to and from school on the buses. So I can put the rest of it to later if you want. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for letting us move that forward on the agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of meeting records from our January 12th regular school committee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Did anyone have edits or corrections that they would like us to entertain? I'm not seeing any. Dr. McKenzie, you're good too? Okay. Let me call the roll. Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Lauren DeVisnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. I should note that Ms. Quayle has a conflict in his absence this evening. Okay. Our next item is an open forum for citizen concerns. It's for input to our agenda items or non-agenda items. This evening, anyone that was interested in speaking has made a request via citizen, citizen concerns with an S at Beverlyschools.org before 7:00 p.m., or they have signed in on our signup sheet. I believe, I have a few of the names. I did see someone go up there, so let me just double check real quickly. Okay. First is Allison Latalien de Pietro of 193 East Lothrop Street. Push it till it's green. There you go.
There we go.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for welcoming me to speak tonight. I was very pleased with the state's decision to let the mask mandate expire. But I came here tonight because I was also under the impression, and I could be wrong, based on what Governor Baker and Commissioner Riley indicated, that at a local level, there could be some modifications to that and different rulings based on what the boards decided. So I had a whole spiel lined up for you tonight to just express my feelings in a respectful way. However, it sounds like what you're saying is, is that you're on board with this expiring, which is, which is great. So instead, I'm just going to go right down to the bottom of my spiel and read that, which will only take a moment. And it says, you know, "It's time for us to see the kids' smiling faces and return to a sense of normalcy for those who are ready and support those who are not and continue their masking. And it's time for us to allow the teachers, who have honestly been absolutely amazing through this whole thing, to allow them to focus on teaching and not policing our kids and getting, everyone getting back to what they love." And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next in the signup order is Elise Sinagra. Sinagra, I'm sorry. I really need to use these. 8 Lincoln Street.
Well, I have my spiel. How about when you come to the microphone, don't unpush the button. I have my spiel, but I'm also very happy to hear that the governor has made some decisions along with DESI. But I do, like Larinda, have some concerns about how we're going to be moving forward because today, my daughter experienced some bullying within your school system. That is very disturbing, and that is surrounding her views and, well, her viewpoints on where we are with the COVID situation. And her choices have somehow made other people angry. And I don't appreciate it, and I would like to find a way for these kids to be empathetic to one another. My daughter is unvaccinated, and the people that are attacking her are vaccinated people. And they're telling her that she's going to kill people. She is not, they're not okay with hanging around with her. She's put other people at risk, and that's not okay. These are the type of things that we're experiencing in this school that people need to address. And I mean a school assembly with people that have experience in empathy. Psychologists, people that need to sit down with these people and have, and teach them how to see other people's views and appreciate and respect other people's views. It is not okay what's going on in the school system. You know, COVID is one problem, and now we have a bigger problem, and I need it addressed. And it should be addressed by everybody. Everybody here in this room should know the severity of what's happening in the division in the school system. It's very upsetting. And so I hope together that we do take this seriously and have an active plan, like Larinda pointed out. We have, we are proactive in pulling all these kids together and making sure that they respect and understand one another. That's the lesson we should be teaching them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Cordy of 466 Cabot Street, apartment 2L.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak today. I also had wrote a letter asking to consider what, you know, was on TV today and what the governor said in DESI. So I'm not going to read the whole letter that I wrote because I don't need to. So I will just address about the empathy part of it in school. I have sixth-grade twins at BMS. My kids are also not vaxxed, and it is discussed in class. My children tell me that it is discussed sometimes about children who are vaxxed, children who aren't vaxxed, children should get vaxxed. These are by teachers, and I'm not going to mention any teachers' names because, other than the conversations I have, I like my kids' teachers, so it's not about that. But I want to make sure that there is empathy with choices that parents have made for their children, whether it be being vaxxed or not wearing a mask. You were talking about having empathy with children who choose to wear a mask. We want to make sure there's empathy for children who choose not to wear a mask, especially by the teachers because things are said to the students about masking and about vaccination. And I just want to make sure that in the classroom, it should be about what they're being taught, not the choices that are made, personal choices made by their parents outside of school. And so other than that, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Larissa Mills, 749 Hale Street.
Hi, everybody. I, I wrote you guys a letter, which I'm not going to read because I'm really pleased that you guys are, looks like you're going to go along with DESI's recommendation, so I appreciate that. But I, so I will just follow up on what they are saying, and it's something that I feel like I've been addressing with you, Sue. And it's something I've been addressing with Ms. Taylor and Lisa Oliver, and she's been very receptive, I have to say. But this tone has been set from the very beginning of this pandemic, from the top down. And it's been really disappointing to see the attitude of teachers, of principals, of, right from the top, even the communication that's sent home, telling parents what to do during their breaks, what not to do during their breaks, so that if a family chooses to see their grandparents a year into this, because they have not seen the grandparents, and then bullying then ensues online because these children were brought somewhere because their parents brought them there, and they are now put all over social media that, how dare you, we're in a pandemic, you're traveling. Yes, after a year, they needed to see grandparents, and we're allowed to do that, and it is not up to the school to tell us what to do on our vacation. We all know how to take care of ourselves. I think we're at a great point in the pandemic where we do have this concept of one-way masking. So I do feel like if you guys could start to articulate what that means so that the wearer is protected, so that some people that are still having a hard time with COVID, and they are fearful, that they understand that they are protected. So I do think that that's something that's really important that has to come from you guys and should start now so that the people who are wearing them, they feel comfortable, because you have a lot of children who are absolutely terrorized by other people and bare faces now. And this is in part because we have teachers who are, I mean, the mask comes right here and there. It's, it's, the focus on the mask has become the focus. We have gotten away from education, you talk about empathy, and I love that. And I, this is something that I think has been missing throughout this whole thing. We see it with adults. I mean, people are throwing coffee on people in Dunkin' Donuts. It is a mess, and we really are looking to you guys to just please set the tone, just understand that some kids, it's harder for them to wear a mask. I mean, I have a son in middle school. He is active and just, it's a constant. He's not thinking about the mask. He's not doing it to always be defiant, but at a certain point, they've been told what to do for two years on this. So I'm just asking for this message to sort of come across from you guys. I think with the vaccination issue as well, it's not, are you the doctor? Are you Dr. Silva? Are you a doctor? I don't want to speak as a doctor, but like, we've all become COVID experts throughout this, I feel like. I feel like everyone has their own. But from my understanding, it's not a sterilizing vaccine. It does not stop the transmission. So if you get it, from my understanding, and I could be totally wrong, but from my understanding, it is not a sterilizing vaccine. It was meant to reduce symptoms so that if you take the vaccine, you are less likely to be really sick or really hospitalized or all of those things. And that is wonderful. And that's why it's a great choice and it's a great tool. And here we are, two years down the road. We should be celebrating the fact that, like, we have all these things that are happening. We have better masking. We have the vaccine. And everyone now in all of our school system has the choice to take it or not take it.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Just want to make sure. Mr. Ochino, you're not present. And Jennifer Brudzukian? No. Okay. Those were all the sign-ups I had. Next, we have items by consensus. There is a list of item warrant items A through E on our agenda and the dollar amounts associated with each. I don't wish to read all of the numbers. They are presented publicly. And generally, we take a motion to approve these warrants by consensus. Do I have such a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Viznick. In a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Silva.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we take a roll call?
Yes.
Can we just tell our audience that if they want to leave, they can? Or if they want to stay?
I was going to say, we will get back to Dr. Churchek the rest of her presentation. But this is also being broadcast and recorded on BevCam.
Just to clarify, my presentation beyond this does not have anything more to do with vaccines or COVID or any of that. So if you were wondering about that, just so you know.
Yeah, it's about budget.
I'm so sorry. I have a question.
Okay.
I didn't think I was going to make it, so I didn't sign up. Is it possible to speak for a moment? Or do I have to?
Chair.
I'll do whatever.
That's all right. We didn't make that last call. So go ahead, please. We need your name and address for the record, however.
Susan Meany, 3 pasture Road.
Susan Meany.
Yep.
3 pasture Road. Okay. And the time limit is about three minutes.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you for having us. Thank you for listening. I loved the dialogue. I love being able to hear other people's ideas and opinions and what you guys have gone through. And I've tried to pay as close attention as I can. I come here tonight as a mom, but also as a scientist and as a medical professional. And I come here tonight to ask you all to be bold. I come here to plead for you to be bold for our children. Our children need you desperately. Our children are dying. They are dying because of the mandates that have been put enforced on them through people in power who have no right to do it. The masks that you're putting on our children that you are all wearing do not help you. I've studied virology. That's what I did. I worked with Anthony Fauci. That's what I did. The masks that you're wearing do absolutely nothing to protect you or me. But what they're doing is they're killing our children. They're putting them in psych wards. The psych wards are full, in case you didn't know, with children who are suffering from social and emotional effects of what you people have done. And I ask you to be bold. This virus isn't going to change on February 27th. This magic date isn't going to go, "Oh, my God, it's awful on February 27th, and we're free-for-all on February 28th." Let's be bold. Let's get out there and do what we're supposed to do and help our children. This vaccine that everyone's bullying my child about not having has killed more children than COVID has killed. It doesn't prevent you from getting it. It doesn't prevent you from spreading it. I did surgery all day today. I wore my surgical mask. Why? So I didn't get large droplets into my patient's abdomen. It had nothing to do with preventing a virus. Your viron particles are minute. You're fooling yourselves. It does nothing. You are not protected. But people in power have taken it as a tool to bully our children and say, "Put that mask up. Put that mask up. Are you vaccinated?" One person asked my child if they're vaccinated, and it is not their right because they're not his doctor. You are 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 not his doctor. And you are not his doctor. You have no right to ask him. You have no right to deprive him of oxygen. You're depriving my child of oxygen. You're making him hypercapnic. You are affecting their brain function. You are affecting their muscle tissues. And boys in my son's age are dying of heart attacks. Heart attacks in the ER. I implore you, do your research, open your minds, have some empathy. As I've learned, living in Beverly for the time that I have, this is a wonderful, very, very wonderful, open, empathetic society. We accept everybody. Why don't you accept my child? Why don't you accept that he doesn't want to wear a mask and he doesn't want to get a vaccine? Why do your teachers not accept that? You all tell those teachers and those leaders to leave our children alone.
Thank you, Ms. Meany.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Returning to the order that was in front of us, we have the items by consensus. We have a motion for Ms. Viznick, seconded by Dr. Silva. And we'll do the roll call vote. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Larinda Viznick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. Six with one absent. Very quickly, updates from the chair. I did not get the slide prepped. I'm not going to go through that effort. I did distribute, and it will be in a packet, just a one-page slide. This is to benefit our school committee members, to remind them of all of the resources that are included in our annual membership to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They have a number of great services that Beverly has used in prior years. We'll call it pre-COVID. We really took advantage. And we did have a couple of opportunities to meet with our field services representative, Dorothy Presser. As Dr. Silva knows, we have the opportunity to attend the charting the course. It's about a four-hour, from soup to nuts, about what it means to be on the school committee. Gives good insight to the way that open meeting laws work, how to look at our budget and understand our budget. And we're grateful Dr. Churchek's going to give us an in-person view for Beverly specific tonight. They also have services for superintendent searches, a number of member resources, and publications. Many of you are probably receiving physical mailings from them. They do a few times a year newsletters. They provide calendars. They provide cheat sheets for Robert's Rules on how to run our meetings. And they also have a lot of lunch and learn events, conferences, and webinars. One thing that I've recently signed up for is the Daily Ed email. It's actually a great service that one of the MAS C representatives, who's also on a school committee in Western Mass, puts out where they aggregate all the top headlines across the country, but more specifically in the Commonwealth. And it gives you sort of a daily dose in the morning of some of the topics that other school committees are dealing with. And I think it gives a lot of perspective. So I would encourage all of the members, just take a look at the sheet. I put the link to the website. If you have any problems logging in, we can help get Dorothy Presser to get you an account with a password. And some of the items are in front of the password. Some of the items are behind the password. They also do provide us with a lot of guidance on advocacy issues and advice on how to lobby for the things that are important for our students. So that's all I had on that topic. Thank you. In terms of upcoming meetings and dates, because of the school vacation week, our Finance and Facilities and Committee of the Whole meeting will be next Wednesday. So we'll be right back here, same bat channel, same bat station. At 6:30, it will be Facility and Finance. At 7:30, it will be Committee of the Whole. So we'll continue some of our conversations next week. As a reminder, please do keep Wednesday, March 23rd, which is normally a Committee of the Whole meeting, on your calendar as a joint meeting with the City Council. We will be holding that in the auditorium, so we have sufficient spacing and resources to have both the City Council and School Committee together.
Question?
Yes.
Are we going to stack that night? Or is it going to be the?
I think we will stack that night, but maybe we can look to have an abbreviated FNF. But it will be just down the hall. So.
Okay, thanks.
We'll figure the logistics out closer, too. And then the city solicitor reached out to Council President Flowers and myself to advise us that there will be a citywide open meeting law training. And it is penciled in for March 31st. From 6:00 to 7:30 PM, it will be held in a remote fashion. So you don't need to get somewhere. You just need to get online. And we're looking at options for those who cannot join us remotely at that time, if there's a recording or something else that we can do to make sure that we all stay sharp on our open meeting law requirements. That's it from the chair. Dr. Churchek, if you wouldn't mind, we'll go back to your slides.
So I'm going to go back to presenting what I had. I, I hope you guys can bear with me just a little bit tonight. I know that we had talked at the last meeting. I introduced the topic of the budget process and where we're going and our priorities. And at the very end, the last slide, I don't know if you remember, we had the little unveiling of our Chapter 70 proposal in the governor's budget. And so I wanted to take a few minutes to just walk you through what Chapter 70 is, how it's determined, why we got an increase, and what the Student Opportunity Act is in preparation for our conversations next week, when we're going to be talking about the specific Beverly budget and the items that are, that we're proposing as we go forward. So I will just try to walk you through. I think if it's all right with you, feel free to interrupt at any time if you have questions, rather than wait to the end so that if it's on a specific slide. It's a little dense, but I think I've broken it down, hopefully, to a point where everyone can at least walk away with a better understanding of what the increase is about. So just to begin with, what we, what we're talking about in general is the governor's budget, which is called House 2, which I learned was, it's House 2 because it's the second year of the legislative session. It's House 1 in the first year of the legislative session. But the proposed budget that was released proposes a $48.5 billion budget. It's a 1.7 increase from FY '22. And so I thought I'd take a little time to say, what's the impact on education of this budget? Because if you watched any of the release that the governor had, there's a lot of talk about what was going to happen and how it was going to improve education. So first of all, this budget fully implements the second year of the Student Opportunity Act. They're kind of intertwined. And I think if I could start off, the Student Opportunity Act is Chapter 70 funding. It's not like a separate pool of money. And I think often, there's some misunderstanding that there's Chapter 70 money. And then there's this pool of money that's identified as Student Opportunity Act. And in essence, it's really not. It's all the same money. It's all rolled in. The difference is how we get the extra money and why that incremental increase is occurring. The Student Opportunity Act, the legislation, just sort of describes to us why that's happening. It implement, this budget increases Chapter 70 by $458.3 million. That's an 8.8% increase. That is one of the largest nominal formula increases ever that we've ever had. And again, this student, it is this Student Opportunity Act that's pushing up these foundation rates. And the reason that is, is because the way that they're calculating and reimbursing for low-income, special education, English learners, and benefits. So I think at first, we want to do a little celebrating that the Chapter 70 funding, the finance system that we have, really is driven by student needs. And it factors in the community's ability to pay. It is true, I think there's a lot of conversation often, Chapter 70 money, everybody doesn't get the same amount of money. Every district doesn't get the same amount of money. Every city or town doesn't get the same amount of money. It's divided up based upon what the student needs are in that community and what that community's ability to pay is. So I think that's just something to remember. It's got a little flexibility that way. Specifically, it quantifies annual targets for the cost of educating students. And it identifies how those costs should be divided between the state and the local taxpayers. And in this Chapter 70 funding, while we haven't reached all the targets, I really do want to say, this House 2 proposal brings us a lot closer to them than we've been. So I think it's, you know, we have targets that are set. And this, this proposal has probably been one of the greatest increases that brings us closer to reaching the targets that are set. So how were those increases distributed? So factors that impact the increase were, in the foundation budget, were enrollment, inflation, and the wage adjustment factor. And in terms of local contribution, it looks at property value, income, and municipal revenue growth factor. So tonight, I'm really talking about those two items, the two largest factors that impact our increase that we got in Chapter 70 money, which is enrollment and inflation. And based on these factors, there's a wide range of increases across, across the whole state. For example, the gateway cities, they receive the largest increases. Fall River received a $1,920 per pupil increase, while other districts in the Commonwealth received a $30 minimum per pupil increase. If you remember, last year, Beverly was a district that received the $30 per pupil minimal increase. But what happened this year? Because we noticed that there was a large incremental increase when we showed the number last week. So in Beverly, our Chapter 70 funding for FY '23, first of all, it's important to know, it's based on October 1, 2021 enrollments. It's one of those things where the timestamp that they use to enter in who our enrollment is and what our demographics are is taken on a certain date. And it's on our October 1 enrollments, which we supply to the state. It's also really important to know that those numbers aren't the actual number of all the students that sit in our seats. It's the actual number of students for whom we're fiscally responsible. So there is a difference in the numbers. When I say there are 4,700 kids and they say there are 4,518, or, you know, the difference sometimes is, school choice students that are sitting in our seats aren't factored into our Chapter 70. They're factored into their sending district's. So just, just so that you know why there's some discrepancies maybe in some of that enrollment. Across the state, enrollments dropped over 30,000 students on the October 1 reporting. But that didn't happen in Beverly. We have a more stable enrollment. We actually had a slight decrease of 18 students. And that number's probably changed up and down five times since the time they took that piece, but at the time that it was taken. However, the biggest shift for Beverly in enrollment is the number of students that are identified as low-income. And we're going to examine that shift a little bit later as I talk about the Student Opportunity Act. The second factor is inflation. And in general, inflation was set at 4.5, which is the highest rate ever recorded for Chapter 70 funding. That's the highest inflation that they've taken into consideration. The actual inflation rate for the first quarter was 5.9%. And in the fourth quarter was 7.3%. So this is calculated on 4.5. But for reference, if they had used the 5.9, we would have had another $155 million added to the foundation budget and another $98 million in aid. So I do know that the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents is moving forward with some legislative requests that they consider, thinking about, looking at that inflation rate. However, the 4.5 is in the SOA, in the Student Opportunity Act. It's capped at 4.5, which is why that's what they used. So just a piece of information. So the Student Opportunity Act is in its second year of a six-year phase-in. And that is what guarantees a minimum of $30 per pupil increase for districts. That's what we received in FY '22. In FY '22, 246 districts received the minimal amount. This year, only 135 districts received the minimal increase. And in Beverly, we're going to receive $559 per pupil in an incremental increase. That's, that's where you, when you add that up, that's where we get to that 2.5 million number that you looked at at the end of the last meeting. Again, the Student Opportunity Act is the major factor that's pushing the foundation rates. And Beverly really is kind of a test case of that. It's a pretty good example of what, how the Opportunity Act is working and how it's making some changes in funding. So remember, the elements of the Student Opportunity Act are low-income, special education, English learners, benefits and fixed charges, and the guidance and psychological services. So those are the categories that push up the foundation that the Student Opportunity Act. So those are sort of like the allowable areas that they look at when they're calculating it. Quick peek at Beverly by the numbers. FY '23, our enrollment in FY '22 was calculated at 4,613. In FY '23, 4,595. Remember, those are the October 1 numbers of the years before. That's an 18-student decrease for us in Beverly. Our foundation budget was listed at $53,925,726. In '23, it's $58,610,573. That's at $1,020 per pupil. Our required district contribution in FY '22 was 43,334,812. In FY '23, it was 45,452,132. It was an increase of $461 per pupil. But please remember, we, the city contribution that we have in Beverly far exceeds our minimum. That is our required district contribution. And then the number that we really want to talk about tonight is this Chapter 70 funding that in. that in FY '22, we received $10,599,14. In FY '23, we're slated, slated, hasn't passed yet, but slated to receive $13,158,441. That's an increase of 2.5 million, 2,567,527. That's a $559 increase per pupil, and it's a 24.2% increase of Chapter 70 funding. Now remember, Chapter 70 funding only represents about 1/6th of the funding that we use to run the district, but it is a 24% increase in that funding. So I wanted to kind of at least get these numbers to you and in your head so you can kind of begin to understand where they're coming from and what they're doing. So why did Beverly increase in FY '23? Where did that increase come from? The major factor for the increase of funding in Beverly was the number of low-income students that were matched through the direct certification process in the district. The increase impacts the formula in three ways. So first of all, the Act reinstates the definition of low-income enrollment that was used prior to FY '17. And Lauren, I know you and I have talked about this quite a bit, the 133% of the poverty level was what it was between '17 and '21, but prior to '17, and it reinstates that 185% of the federal poverty level. So that is an increase per pupil that we will get for every student that's identified low-income. And additionally, and this is really important, the number of students identified as low-income in Beverly rose by 250 students. Remember, our enrollment didn't change. We didn't get new kids. Some kids, you know, our numbers are still four, eight, only 18 less students, but all the students that are sitting in our seats, 250 of them, additional 250 were identified as low-income through the direct certification process, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then the percentage of low-income students rose from 30% to 36.5%. That increases our incremental base by $262 per low-income student. So that the incremental increase, remember, there's a base number, and then for each subcategory, you get an incremental increase. And so our incremental increase for our low-income students is 5,056. It's actually a sorting category. We were in group six when we were at 30%. We're in group seven now, and so it is a higher increment over the base that you get when you're in group seven. I wanted to talk a little bit about the low-income, because Karen, I saw your face when you said it. How did that happen? For FY '23, the department designates a student enrolled on October 1 as low-income if the student is either identified as participating in state public assistance programs, including the SNAP program, we call it SNAP, Student Nutritional Assistance Program, transitional aid to families with dependent children, mass health and foster care, or they can be certified as low-income through the new supplemental data collection process. We utilize it, but there were very few students that went through that process for us here in Beverly. I checked with Maddie, the majority, almost all of our students were identified through direct certification. They could also be reported by a school district as homeless through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistance Program application. So those are ways that students can be identified as low-income. There are some other factors that had minor implications on the increase. It assumes the in-district special education enrollment to 5% for vocational students and 4% for non-vocational students. Remember, we're in this 2/6th of the process, we're in the second year of the rollout. So it increased by 2/6th of the gap to 4.86 and 3.86 for our special education students, so there was a slight increase there. Students who attended the after-doc program, which we heard a lot about tonight, accounted for an increase of reimbursement as vocational students. That incremental over the base is 5221, more than a traditional high school student. But please note, it comes in in Chapter 70 under that, except for that we also pay an invoice to the NSAT, the tech school, of $5,500 per student. So we actually, it ends up in essence costing the district $300 per student for that enrollment at the after-doc program. And then finally, the employee benefits inflation rate was applied, and based on the enrollment-weighted three-year average premium increase for GIC plans, our increase was 4.5%. And so that had a slight impact on some of our money that we came in. So it was important to me to pull that apart and understand that, and I think for some of you, as we have these conversations, it's helpful to know where and why that increase came. It's always important, I think, I found it, it took me a long time to wrap myself around what it was, but when it was $30 per pupil, I had less concern as when it was $559. So I'm happy to answer any questions for any of you later as we go forward, but I have some more, just some more information about the Student Opportunity Act. Again, remember, that was legislation that impacts our Chapter 70 reimbursements, and we had to submit a plan. So we submitted our Student Opportunity Act plan, I think it was April 1 of 2020 when we did that. It was not funded in its first year, its first full year of funding was this fiscal year. We received $30 per student, which was 141 in funds in essence. So when we look at that plan and we report on how we use the funds that came in based upon those increases, that's what we identified in our meeting last week. And so now I need to submit an amendment to the plan to reflect sort of what we actually did and then look towards goals for the next year. That is due on April 1 of 2022, so I'll be bringing that to the committee. It requires a committee to review it and approve it, and we'll do that sometime in the March meeting, one of the two March meetings. Not the city council one, so the one before. This is just a reminder, I showed you this last week, this was what we originally said we were going to spend all of our money when we thought we were getting a lot. And then this is what we actually ended up utilizing that money for, how we were able to kind of pull it apart. So this is sort of the amendment that I will submit, that this is what in actuality we did. And then finally, I just want to end with, one of the requirements of both ESER and of SOA are to make sure that we are collecting information from the community, from our stakeholders, from underrepresented groups of people, from school committee, from the union, from teacher groups. And we've been doing that throughout the year as we collect it. And these were the results of the survey that we did, I think, I want to say four or five months ago, as we were contemplating the ESER grant. We had 517 responses from parents as we sent this out, and this really was, the questions were gauged on how would we use ESER funding if we were to get ESER funding. And so these are the responses from the community in terms of the allowable expenses. This is really just the allowable expenses of each of the grant and of some of the SOA money. The largest one was to add additional staff. It's broken down a little bit more here. So in terms of looking at the social, emotional, and mental health needs, there was a large response that people were interested in making sure that a critical priority for spending included the social, emotional, and mental health needs. A response that we should be providing students with high-quality curriculum materials. A look at individual spending for reducing class size to provide students more individualized support and meeting grade levels. And if you remember, within this budget year, we did do that. We added particularly in our primary grades, extra teachers at all of our elementary schools so that our class size was diminished in our kindergartens and first-grade classrooms. Money spent on addressing lost instructional time to support students. This money, this was an area that we addressed through our scholars' clubs, our acceleration academies over the summer last year and into fall of this year. So that's just, I just wanted to sort of share this information with you, bring it forward, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Question.
Ms. Fiznik?
Maybe you plan to speak about this in March, but I wonder if you can speak to, you mentioned briefly in a previous meeting, City Connects? And whether any of the SOA or ESER funds, whether you plan on spending those funds to work with City Connects? And a little bit about your plan, is the point of working with them? Yeah, I'll just stop there. Because I know what I want to work with City Connects on, so rather than, you know...
Well, our initial meeting is, our follow-up meeting is this week, no, next week, coming up with them. Our plan is to, you know, partner with them and avail ourselves of, you know, a lot of things. There's not a distinct plan yet on what that partnership will look like or what we will do, but we're just sort of embarking down that road.
Follow-up.
Go ahead, Ms. Fiznik.
So is there, can you speak to why you chose, I believe City Connects is out of B.C., and there's a similar program out of Harvard? So did you look at both of them?
I have not looked at both of them yet. The reason that we're working with City Connects right now is through our partnership with ECLC, our Essex County Learning Communities. We've been working with them for the last four years. That is a group that we have that is in partnership with a lot of regional districts around here that we did our work. I don't know if you remember the parent forum, the parent committees that we had, that work all came from that. So they're a nonprofit that we've been working with that has brought together a number of districts on the North Shore to do some specific work around that. So they were, City Connects came to us through them, they were recommended, and that, so that's why we're exploring that. You know, I actually am not opposed to exploring a lot of different options, but that was one that came to us through them, and so that's why we're exploring that one.
All right, and just to tie back to Ms. Abel's flyer earlier, MASC offered a session a while ago on a Saturday morning about, and the City Connects people were speakers, and the fact that ESER money could be spent on their services. And for anybody here who are watching at home, don't know, City Connects is like a social services, holistic approach to pulling...
Right. Yeah, what they do is they come in and they partner with communities. For us, and specifically, we were looking for some ways to develop metrics as to how effective the services that we had were, ideas and thoughts about how we could expand those services, where are areas of strength, where do we need supports? But they also, and they also have opportunities for us to have City Connect counselors join us to do some work. It all depends on what, it's sort of like a large menu of what they offer. But it really is focused around, we heard a lot tonight about our guidance, and we've worked really, really hard on providing extra supports to our guidance because we knew we had a focus. This is sort of a similar way of taking a look at your school adjustment counseling services, your mental health services. We've added a number of new programs at the high school that, you know, we want to be able to have some metrics and measures and some accountability, isn't the right word, but being able to better understand the efficacy of what we're doing and how we can improve that. So that's sort of the general direction that we're hoping to, that's what we're hoping to get from it.
I believe we have a question from Dr. McKenzie next.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask whether, Dr. Churchek, if you have any concrete ways of explaining to us what that offsets in terms of cost when we have these additional amounts that come through to assist, you know, lower-income students, for example? Just for the public's sake, can we talk about what that might look like in terms of different supports or where those resources may go?
I think I can give one concrete example. I don't know, for those that were tuned in earlier at our SISL meeting, we had a lot of conversation, and we heard from Julie Farrara, who we moved from an assistant principal role into a role of Director of Career and College Readiness, and College and Career Readiness, and an ability to focus. So her salary right now is supported, it came in under the ESER funding, and it's something that can be supported by some of the additional funding that we have available. We have additional staff in counseling, but one of the ways that we were able to use it as well is to take a look at the curriculum materials that we're using and make sure that we have the materials that are high-quality, research-based, that have the resources available that help us make sure that we're able to reach all of our students. The other, the acceleration academies that we run, the scholars' clubs that we run, some of the intervention programs that we have going on, those are all, you know, the ways that we're directing those resources and helping to strengthen what we're able to do in our schools.
Thank you.
Question?
Sure, Ms. Fiznik.
Is it, is it true that in the past, if we had this type of money, like the money specifically targeted towards helping low-income children, that we had to be careful in how we spent it, whether we were a partial Title I?
Ah, so you're talking about your entitlement grants?
Yes.
Yeah, so those are different, and we still have entitlement grants that come in. There were, there were quite a, there was a strong list of allowable expenses. So that slide that I showed you with all those things, with each grant come allowable categories of expenditures. And Title I has, the entitlement grants have an even stricter sort of menu of what you can and can't do. Previously, we had schools that were designated as targeted assistance schools, so the compliance in reporting as to which students you would, what you could do, what those teachers could do, how they had to report, what percentage of their time was spent with low-income students and not. Now in Beverly, all of our schools are school-wide. No, I take that back, four of them are school-wide. Hannah is a targeted assistance school, so Hannah is still operating under that. One of the, we added an intervention teacher, she's specifically designed in the Hannah building, and she targets specific students within that building. And that's based upon the percentage of low-income students in a particular building.
Right, I think that that, it was easy, it's easier to think about that and think about targeted funds, and I think that that's how I interpreted Dr. McKenzie's question, right? If you say, okay, well, we're getting this SOA bump for specific students, then it seems like we should have to account for the fact that it's going to specific, right, just like we do in the targeted...
So I guess, I guess that is the difference, and I think I would differ with that. I think what I would say is, SOA isn't a pool of money that's specifically for something. It's money that says, based upon the demographic and makeup of your school district, it's expected that the cost of educating students in your district is going to increase, and so that's why Chapter 70 increases. And the allowable expenses under ESER are, so your appropriated money, your Chapter 70 money, there's not allowable expenses one way or another. It goes in, and it is what you use in your appropriated budget. The Title I is additional funding, it's supplemental funding to the district to specifically target students for low-income. ESER funding, you can utilize the same allowable expenses that you can in Title I, but there's a broader interpretation of how you can use that money.
Right, I understand that, and I appreciate the fact that you said that because I'm sure there's people watching at home who don't understand that. And so I think that when we talk about the bump per student, and we talk about the fact that we have more students now who are low-income, it is a logical, like, next step to say, okay, well, we got this extra money because we have more low-income students, and therefore we should be able to look at a specific line item and say, we're spending the money this way targeted, as if it were Title I money, on those low-income or the ELs or the whatever.
Yeah.
And so I just think it's a distinction that needs to be made.
I think for me, one of the things that I'm hoping is what happens through this process is, we were very concerned when, not concerned, we loved that we got ESER money, but we were concerned when we got this influx of funding, and we were finding all wonderful ways to enhance the work that we were doing in schools and able to reach and improve access and opportunity within the high school for, you know, specifically looking at dual enrollment and how do we increase opportunities for students that are underrepresented or students that are low-income, and we're able to do those things. And that was done on the ESER grant, and my worry was, how are we going to sustain this as we go forward? This incremental increase in Chapter 70 funding, I'm hopeful, will allow us to say, well, there are still, still doing what we're going to do, but targeting some specific things that we've identified as very effective and being able to absorb them. So it takes, like, for me, that's at least a little step in that direction. I also believe that it's designed to balance city versus, you know, local versus state obligations or whatever. I mean, I do think that, I don't know that much about it, but there's a part of it that said there's a number of cities that are spending, having to spend more money on schools than even the minimum because, I mean, I think the city's been carrying us for the expenses that we've had for some of those things. And so, you know, I think there's a balance between that, and I think that's what we have to keep examining and looking at. and I think that's what we have to keep examining and looking at, though. But I do think it's a huge relief that as we've identified the directors that we have of curriculum. So we just looked at NEASC. NEASC said our written curriculum needs improvement. We happened to have the same year brought in two directors of curriculum who are doing exactly what that NEASC report says, right? And those are very crucial and important positions, and they do benefit our students that are low-income. Because as we start to look at data and as we facilitate data meetings and as we build data literacy for our teachers, those improvements are going to impact students that are low-income, students that are underrepresented.
I'll call myself real quickly. Thank you, Dr. Trocheck, for sharing that. I'm interested to hear more about City Connects and any other similar-type program. I think that the, the role of the schools, especially coming out of the pandemic, has certainly increased where, you know, our, our nurses have been right on the front lines of this. And a lot of care for our students has gone unmet. A lot of the needs for care have gone unmet, whether it be mental health, social, emotional well-being, or just basic primary health care. And so I'm looking forward to see how that report and that, that process works out for us. Hopefully, it doesn't take too long to get some really actionable items for us. And I look forward to the further discussions we're going to have on the budgets in the coming weeks to make sure that our priorities are placed where our students need them most.
Yeah, so what I, what I will come forward with next week or what you can anticipate, Jean and I have been working on the budget. We'll be coming forward with sort of what did our department have? What did our principals, what are, what are the asks? What is that long laundry list? That doesn't mean that everything on it is something that we're able to do. But what is it that, that our building administrators are identifying as the resources that they need to kind of move forward? What are some of the increased costs? How do we plan on utilizing the ESER funding? And, you know, versus money that's in the appropriated budget? And so that's what next week is. It's really going to be kind of like a blueprint or a, you know, a rollout of what our ideas are doing and where we are at this point. We're also, we've got a planned meeting with the city, so we'll have a chance to sit down with the mayor in Bryant and have a conversation around funding and what that might look like. And so hopefully, when we come forward on Wednesday, we'll have some more information. It will be the February draft version of our thinking at that point in time as we move forward.
Okay.
Last call for questions for Dr. Trocheck.
Okay. Next on our agenda, thank you very much, Dr. Trocheck. Next, we will have our committee reports. If I could ask Ms. Biznick to start with our finance and facilities.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance and facilities last met on January 26th. And we had an administrative update that included a review of the FY '22, that's this year, staffing pattern, which includes 11 full-time equivalents, 11 additional positions above and beyond what was in our budget. We had a report on the electric buses. We have two now, and there is a bid for an additional three electric buses. We do have the funding in our budget to cover this lease plus an additional two vans that will need to be replaced next school year. Today, in our fleet, we have 10 hybrid vehicles plus the two electric buses. So it's kind of exciting to think about the fact that our, our regular, quote-unquote, regular old budget, as it, as it is, we're continuing to migrate to more green vehicles. And certainly that is helped tremendously. Our two electric buses right now have been funded a tremendous amount on the city side as opposed to, and with some grants, as opposed to, quote-unquote, on the school side. The USDA has increased the reimbursement rate for breakfasts and lunches. Breakfast, we now get 14 more cents per breakfast served and lunches 25 cents per. It's always nice to have a higher reimbursement rate. Ms. Liel also spoke briefly about the fact that we continue to experience some supply chain issues. And related to the food services, we have universal free lunch right now, and that includes after-school snacks. And as of our last meeting, four of our elementary schools are participating in an after-school snack program. Then we went through our usual business of reviewing our financial reports. And the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends acceptance of a gift to schools in the amount of $250. It is a district-wide from the organization Global Child.
I would make a motion to gratefully accept the donation from Global Child for $250.
Second.
Oh, yes, it's a roll call. That's my job. I think I had it in kind of one order here. Let's see. That was my first meeting. Which order did I do it? I think I did it this order here. Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Dr. Silva.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Biznick.
Yes.
Ms. Abel, yes, six to zero.
We are scheduled to meet one week from today, February 16th, at 6:30 right here.
Thank you very much. If I could ask Ms. Robinson next to report out on the Standing Committee of Curriculum Instruction and Student Life.
Of course, okay. So our SISL committee met tonight. We had a very full agenda where Principal Taylor shared a lot of great information about the vision of the graduate at the high school, our NEASC report findings, and those findings are available online. We approved the new program of studies, which includes three new AP offerings. And we're hoping to see more students in younger grades, in nine, grades nine and 10, be able to challenge themselves to take on some advanced coursework. Talked about different course offerings, how this week is Course Excitement Week at the high school and where departments are sharing all the, getting students interested in all the classes they'll be able to choose for next year. We talked about pathways and how Beverly High School is offering, pathways are available in different areas of allied health, business and marketing, hospitality, education and training, and environmental science. We're also offering advanced coursework at both North Shore Community College and Endicott College. Julie Farrara gave, shared information about Essex North Shore's After Dark Program and the college readiness that's starting as early as 7th grade in the Beverly Public Schools. We talked about early college and dual enrollment with North Shore. We introduced our, we introduced here our new curriculum directors who shared information on curriculum work, assessment, and data analysis. So, yeah, we did a lot. And so we have a few, a couple of things that are going to need to hold off until next month, mental health resources and support at Beverly High School and high school student life, such as after-school activities, clubs, and sports. We're going to hold off on that till next month. And, and, okay, our next meeting will be on March 9th. I don't think I left anything out.
Thank you very much. And as always, those meetings are recorded and posted by BEV CAM. So if members hadn't been able to participate in the Standing Committee discussions, the highlights that Ms. Robinson just made are recorded, and you can catch up on all the good things happening in our schools. Next, the negotiations subcommittee has not met since our last regular meeting. I did provide copies of the Unit C contract to all members now that it's been ratified, signed. Policy Subcommittee, I still owe Dr. McKenzie a transition, a handover. And so I don't think we have anything to report there. So we will joy, we have one more item here, communications from school committee members. If there are any communications that would like to be reported out in this open session. Ms. Biznick?
Okay, I'm sure we all got a lot of the same emails. So we're just going to skip right over those ones. A lot about masks. I have one very serious conversation going on, but really more than one, but around whether we might adopt a land acknowledgement, such as the one considered by the city council. I've been communicating with Dr. Morgan on that before deciding whether to bring the suggestion forward for, for conversations here. As I mentioned earlier, I've had some conversations around concern over the general behavior of, of certain children or groups of children at the different school levels. And I think, well, it's always nice to end on a positive note. So I was invited to see a student presentation at Beverly High, part of a public, public speaking class. And there are some students who want to start, yet again, composting at the high school. And so I've been trying to help them, introduce them to various organizations within the city, such as Green Beverly. The mayor and I talked about it, and I was trying to get some cost estimates out of Black Earth Composting. So try to help the children present. You know, if you want to come and ask for something, then you need to come with a plan, right? And so every, it's kind of like coaching. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a learning opportunity for them to just not, not just say, oh, this is what I want to do. But, okay, how do I make a plan about how do I do it? And their English teacher, Ms. Orr, was just absolutely fantastic. And if you get invited in, you know, I, I say it all the time, when you get invited in, you should jump on that opportunity if your schedule allows you to do that. Fantastic classroom conversation. Dot was there, Dr. Flaherty was there, also Ms. Taylor. And, you know, it's just cool to see them want to do something and then want to learn about how do I, how do I then put the pieces together and approach it? So we'll see if they, I think an email came through. It's hard, we got so many emails today. But I'm pretty sure an email came through today where they said, okay, we think we want to come talk to the school committee. How do we do it? So they did not get a reply on that email based on how busy my email was today. So maybe, maybe tomorrow they'll get a reply.
Ms. Robinson, you can go next.
Thank you. So I was talking to Kristin Maraschelchi, the DECA advisor, and she had sent out an email about DECA Closet, which is an online opportunity for students to get gently-used business attire to, to wear at, at competitions. The business attire that the kids wear can often get pretty expensive. And so we were just talking and got to thinking about how it'd be nice to have something right at the high school. So, and just brainstorming how a lot of people are working from home still and might have business attire that they would be willing to donate. And she would love to, she would love to share, she would love to be able to put that into her classroom. And you can contact Kristin at the high school. I'd be happy to, to be a contact person as well if anybody wants to find out how to donate their gently-used or new with tags, whatever, business attire to the DECA program. I know that a lot of parents would appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
In terms of communications that I've received, I think it was all really focused on the mask mandate. And I think it was nice to hear from the community their concerns, having them be able to voice their concerns. Clearly, you know, I think Governor Baker stated it well in saying that our kids have had a lot of, a lot of disruption, a lot of time alone have suffered from this over the past two years. And I think as long as we make sure that we create a supportive environment to sort of move on to the next stage, that we can be supportive of that.
Thank you. I, I also received many of the same emails. I think we were either copied or blind copied on quite a few emails today. I think a majority of them were about Governor Baker's announcement today. Some were also asking if we could maybe extend, but we'll leave it at that. I did have an interesting outreach from a parent asking about how one gets to know about positions that might be upcoming in our future budget, might be open now. And so I did refer her to our Director of HR, as well as to School Spring. I know that Dr. Trocheck has mentioned School Spring and that there are opportunities within our district. I'll just say that for our audience. We are looking to hire good people all the time, especially now. So schoolspring.com or coordinate with our HR director if that's something that interests you and you have something to offer our district. I think with that, I will entertain a motion to, oh, you have another one.
I'm sorry, I just want to say that, like, a lot of the emails that I answered back today, people were asking, are you going to vote tonight? And so I said, no, it's not on the agenda. So I feel like maybe I misled people because although it's true that it was not on the agenda, we did in fact talk about it, and we're not going to vote about it. But I think that that's a, I maybe, I, I'll probably go home and send a whole bunch more emails to say, by the way, we didn't vote on it. But I don't know, I just felt like I gave bad information, so I don't.
Well, I will, I will do a Connect Ed message out tomorrow saying that, you know, that the, that the mandate has been lifted, that we, you know, beginning on the 28th, it will be mask optional. And that's, you know, that's what it means. So I'll be sending a general communication, just so you know, that, you know, that it was, that, you know, in, in, in keeping with the guidance from DESI, we'll be making a transition, sort of like I did when we did the testing program or when we did some of those things. So just know that I, I will be doing that.
And is there any opportunity, I should have asked this earlier, I apologize, to, because we're not at 80%, we can't do anything before the 28th, correct?
They're not accepting any waivers anymore, anyway. So the, so that was another part of the announcement, that if you, that they would not accept waivers, and we were not eligible to apply for a waiver because we were not at 80%.
Because a lot of people asked about that, too.
Yeah, I know, people were wondering about that. It was very clear, you had to reach the 80% threshold, you had to come to school committee. School committee would have had to vote to approve us to apply for a waiver. That would only, that was the vote that would need to happen if we did, if we wanted to circumvent the mandate. But the fact that we're following the guidelines, when the mandate is lifted, it's lifted, and we're just going to go back to following what, you know, what that would be.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's not debatable? All those in favor?
No.
Oh, wait, we get a roll call? Okay, that's all right.
Sorry.
That's all right. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Biznick?
Yes.
Ms. Abel, yes. Six, zero, it is 9:05 PM. Thank you, as always, BEV CAM. And thank you for watching at home and participating at home.
Thank you.